More accurate this year than when those forecast models were put together by the National Hurricane Center. So again, just new tools in the toolkit by the National Hurricane Center. HIRVAC is a software that we use as emergency management. This is authorized to us by the Army Corps of Engineers and the National Hurricane Center. So all EMAs in 159 counties in Georgia have HIRVAC as a tool. HIRVAC lets us overlay a lot of data sets to be able to look and project impact, population. It'll let us kind of model things out, put the storm in motion. And that's always a good visual to understand potential and likelihood and probabilities that might be involved in it. Preparedness, right? So one of the things that we did as partnership with the City of Kingsland and with St. Mary's, with Subbase, with our school board, is to basically participate in the national level exercise 2018 sponsored by FEMA. So we had a fictitious hurricane, you might not know it, right? So we had Hurricane Cora. And Hurricane Cora in the exercise development literally had all the bells and whistles. We had real-time media that was in the kind of the sandbox associated with it. We had all of the injects being released telling us here's where it's turning, it's a category one or it's a category two. And all of that we were able to overlay for our own unique coastal location and start to try to war game collectively what we needed to think about doing and what our own plans called for. So as an example, Kingsland Fire, police, public works, IT, all exercise, separate from me, but in coordination with county as we're doing the exact same process with our own plans to basically go through all of our readiness conditions, test things up uniquely in the case of IT. And I can't speak to the details, and that's Bill Carrera. But Bill was able to go in and have his offside cloud-based servers spooled up to make sure that, one, you've got your data protected, right? But more importantly, that you can use that data, that you could bring that data to life, that software, that all of that backup and make it work should you need to if you had a catastrophic event here. So two big planning points I want to stress. Continuum of Operation Planning, right? What is that? Well, COOP is those things that we do for maybe 30 days to ensure that we can deliver to the public the essential services that they've got to have, right? That's mission essential, high-end. There's a lot of things that we do as government day in and day out that are not considered high priority essential services, right? Your COOP plan, those plans that you continue to revise and work on internally for Kingsland, do just that. They talk to what do you need by resource? What are those mission sets that you have to perform? And who's going to perform those for you when normal day-to-day operations, your business, your infrastructure, your buildings are not available to you? How do you operate under those conditions? That's COOP. COG is continuity of government, right? How do you ensure by succession of command, through your own chain of command, from your mayor, your president, through your council, that you're going to have the last person standing, someone is in charge? And then you ensure that you have effective communication, coordination, and planning so that if you're dispersed and evacuated, you understand how you will communicate. It may be that you're in virtual continuity of government. And then at some point, you've got to rally up. That rally up might be somewhere other than in this county. That's worst-case scenario planning. That's the kind of planning that we have to challenge ourselves for as we go into the 2018 season. So this is a little busy, a little hard to read. But basically, it's operational conditions of readiness, right? OPCON 1, normal season, right? Or I'm sorry, OPCON 5, normal season, all the way down to running through 120 hours out, 72, 48, 24 impact, right? But at a macro level, it's telling us the big muscle movement things that we're thinking about. That's a snapshot from the county. Kingsland has a similar planning process to operate. But one of the things that we're doing is strengthening the ties, the coordination between us so that we're starting to kind of standardize our language and our planning process and who's going to go where so that we all can work in a more unified way. Command process, if we think something's going on, that's the intelligence alert phase, right? We're seeing something over the horizon through the National Hurricane Center, through HIRVAC, right? And we're starting to believe that we need to pay attention. That paying attention part starts to activate certain internal processes by plan and the communication level that we start to do both at the government level as well as starting to communicate with the public. Some of that may be very soft messaging through social media, moving to more direct messaging that might be associated with protective actions. So we stand up our executive policy group. I kind of talked about that. At that executive policy group level, that is the mayor and the city manager. They come physically to the EOC. This is a small cadre of executive leaders. And it has to be a manageable group that we can find that uniform approach to managing an incident with. And so through Irma, and I think the mayor and our city manager here can attest that we spent a lot of quality time together under very adverse conditions, making very big key decisions for us collectively. So here's some of those things that we do at the executive policy incident management team level, right? Government and school closures. Uniquely in Irma, we unified that. There was criticism during Matthew that there was, you know, City of St. Mary's said, "We're going to close government offices at four o'clock on this date." The school said, "We're going to close at this date and time." Subbase is looking at, you know, one piece of information and then, oh, what's the school going to do? And then the county's got a third set of information. The one thing that we stressed that we had to achieve was unified messaging. Unified messaging first has to come from an agreement. We have to agree that we're going to do something collectively. And it's not going to fit uniquely to every single jurisdiction or authority. But for the good of the entire public, you find common ground in that unified process. And joint information system management is the key to everything we'll do. The public clearly expects that there is unified messaging from all of us working together. So declarations, evacuations, functional and special needs populations, search and rescue, purview. Those are some of the things that we had to tackle at that executive policy group. And then down operationally, at the chiefs of police and fire and public works level in terms of their decisions and priorities. So we talked about that unified messaging, right? Manage public expectations. One of the biggest challenges when you evacuate is people wanting to come back, right? My house is there, I want to come to my house. What's the bigger picture? The bigger picture is we may not be able to provide public services to you. There may be limited utility capability. Lift stations may be offline, power outage. Our emergency medical system has been overtaxed. We don't have full capacities. Our hospital may be offline. You may want to come back, but it's probably not safe and in your interest to come back because you're coming into an environment that is not going to be a normal environment. We're not going to have the things to support you. So this is a big balancing act. At the executive policy group level, we've got, we have a lot of work to do in terms of assessing all of our operational environment, looking at power outage, looking at our lift stations, looking at water supply, roadways, hospital, medical, all those things that have to be done. You know, in a worst case, you're not going to have pharmacies, right? Our businesses aren't going to be online. So it's not what we've had in the past where although we've had some limited impact, it's not truly a big catastrophic event. And that's one of those things of managing public expectations that we've got to do a better job of in terms of ensuring they understand we're working hard, but there are limitations and we've had impact. And so that will be one of the things that we'll tackle again this season. Evacuation authority, Georgia Mercy Management Act 1981, senior elected officials, right? Now uniquely in Irma, the governor made the call, right? We voiced concern on the part of our executive policy group and the EMA directors from the coastal counties that you've got to coordinate with the counties. At the end of the day, this is a local crisis for us. We need to be able to communicate through our elected officials, through our public, what we think we're going to prepare for to do. When the governor pulls the trigger and orders an evacuation and it's done, you know, without any consultation with us, that puts us behind with her in terms of our ability to manage both expectations and operations that we've got to carry out, right? So we've been assured that this year there will be a daily conference call with the EMA directors, right? I'll be briefing the executive policy group up. So as the governor's office under the Georgia Mercy Management Agency is priming up for decisions, they're going to be consulting with us for the ground truth. So before that call is made, we'll have input and we'll have some opportunity ideally to communicate where we think the state may be going, if we're not making the decision locally. Decision tools, again, we talked about HIRVAC. Our evacuation zones, no change, right? So your zones, your primary, right? Everything that is east of US 17 and then of course, west of US 17. If you're talking about a full-blown category one, two, three, you know, or above hurricane, you're going to have both zones in that, probably in that evacuation zone. Reentry, there have been changes in the state's reentry plan, right? So there used to be four phases and you had a 2A and a 2B under the Phase 2. There are now five phases, so it's been cleaned up somewhat. We've posted that on the Camden County website under the EMA page. Georgia has changed the reentry pass. If you're familiar with the reentry pass, it would have been past years been issued by EMA, by the County Mercy Management Agency. That is no longer the case. The state will do it and we have on our website in a dropdown, the form, a fillable PDF that goes directly to GEMA along with an email. Once you click it, you fill the form out, it goes in. They will assess it and then they will come back and respond to whoever the requestor is for that application for a reentry permit. Pre-disaster preparedness resources, you know, again, we go through all those things. Local normal operating status, regional generators, ice, fuel. I just got back from a Georgia Department of Defense air guard and guard training scenario for a large-scale hurricane affecting the coastal counties. They have broken it up into areas. So we have a joint operations area for the air guard and Georgia guard where they will come down and basically set up in the Douglas, Georgia area to be able to operate, to deliver the mission sets that they have for each one of the counties. State over the horizon, Emergency Management Assistance Compact, which is EMAC bringing in. And the state of Georgia is already planning because of a loss of a battalion that will deploy out overseas, that they're already making agreements for EMAC to bring in guard from Kentucky and Tennessee and North Carolina that would be coming down directly to fulfill responsibilities in our coastal counties should we be impacted by a hurricane. And of course, our federal support that comes into the state. Shelters, I know some, there've been questions regarding shelters, so let me talk about that. So from a shelter standpoint, there's no safe haven in Camden County from a topography standpoint. And remember this, not only does, is everything potentially in a flood zone with limited access to the area, I don't have anything that is structurally designed to withstand those types of an impact, right? That would also have redundancy in power and utilities and water and sewer. And more importantly, following a disaster, if you think about a pre-storm shelter in our county in a hurricane zone, you're going to now be left with people that you've put into a shelter that you don't have the capacity to support. You won't have medical care, right? There will be limited everything in terms of ability to help them. The plan from the state of Georgia through GEMA is inland, inland sheltering. So two things support that directly. Department of Health has come up with a hurricane registry. That's on our website, you've got a dropdown for it. You hit the link, you go through, you apply. If you meet the criteria, they work out to manage your direct transportation to move you somewhere inland to another county for sheltering that would be managed on the auspices of the state of Georgia through GEMA, right? So that's important to understand. Secondly, where we may have a delta in that, that there's some segment of the population that may not qualify under that hurricane registry, we're prepared as well with GEMA to look at potential transportation requirements to be able to move those that might be identified to an inland shelter location that GEMA would tell us they would be going to. So again, there is no safe haven and there is no sheltering locally. Now that's pre-storm. Let's talk about post-storm. Where it's manageable, where services may be coming back online. You're going to have people that are displaced from their home. Some of those may be returning because we've allowed it by the reentry phase. Some of those are people that simply did not evacuate, did not identify themselves to us and now find themselves needing sheltering. There are two pieces to that. One is our faith-based partners, and they do a fantastic job. Kingsland, St. Mary's, Woodbine, through the county, all of our pastors stepping up. We are working hard to organize them under a Camden VoAD. And we're in the process of working the plan today, okay? And I hope to have that plan within the next 60 days that starts to organize that process for us with our local NGOs, right? Our faith-based, our nonprofits, all of those that have agreed to step up. Think Salvation Army, think Red Cross. Some of those are local, some of those would be brought in external that could already have a local footprint. If you remember through Irma, Southern Baptist Convention, Salvation Army, all of these were huge players in stepping up to provide sheltering and food and counseling and services to the public overall. The other side of that is we recognize at the county level that we want to have to step up and probably come up with sheltering. Now remember, this is coastal. So we're looking at what that location might be, the capacity we might have and how we would carry out that, probably in partnership with the nonprofit and the NGOs. So that's really, any questions on sheltering? I know that was a specific issue of concern that I can answer. All right, here we go on that. So recovery. So some of you may have participated where the process of doing a recovery and redevelopment plan. I talked about COOP, Continuum of Operation Planning. That's 30 days, 30 days of essential services, right? Where we find our workarounds, our resources and our people and our tools and we operate. Beyond that 30 days, you're really into longer-term recovery. Long-term recovery needs strategic planning. So we get, we have a grant through the Coastal Resource Division that's backed sponsored by NOAA and the Georgia Mercy Management Agency. We've done our kickoff meeting at Coastal College. We had great participation from the community and that plan is underway. And I would suspect we probably have that plan in hand in about four months, maybe five. But it's going to be a critical document that's going to take us into the future and it's going to address where that COOP leaves off, how you're going to have long-term recovery and redevelopment. So this is again, just the branding for the hurricane registry for the Department of Health. So we like to say prepare now, right? We've got some new enhancements. We all know a lot of Code Red better, okay? So for Code Red, we've had limitations in the past. One, the accounts that we had, either both the county and the cities had a defined set of minutes on it, right? And when you go through those minutes, you're paying a lot more for those services. The other part of that is it's only as good as if people register in it, right? So you try to encourage the public to register with Code Red because it's an important emergency or urgent communication tool. If you break a water main here, or if you break a water main here and you need to tell the public that you're going to have a boil water alert, that's a great tool for that. But it's also a great tool for communicating evacuation and reentry or shelter in place or active shooter. So there's a lot of things we've not taken advantage of in terms of the software that we're going to. The other most important function of that is called IPAS, which is Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, which is a FEMA-sponsored system that basically we're going to have now residing in our Code Red. And the way it works simplistically is it doesn't matter if you're from New Jersey and you stopped at the pilot station to buy gas today. If we put an alert out, in all the carriers, by federal law, have to carry our message. If our message is an emergency message that meets the criteria that FEMA has established. We've gone through the training, we have the agreement, we have a communication plan. And I would tell you, probably within the next 30 to 60 days, we will have the IPAS component of Code Red. That's a game changer, okay? Because that lets us touch a much larger piece of our population than we've ever been able to do in the past. Ready, Georgia, another very important thing. We talked about functional and medical needs. All that goes under the hurricane registry in our county website. Lessons learned quickly, public awareness, organization between the county and the cities. We've got to continue to build on our partnership. At the end of the day, there is no jurisdiction in this county that will be able to be self-sufficient following a catastrophic event like a hurricane. You're going to need mutual aid and support from everyone. And so if you're St. Mary's, you've got to get that on board. If you're Kingsland, you take that on board. And if you're the county, you have to take that on board. But you can't do that in a vacuum. If you don't plan for it and prepare for it and decide it and make agreements for it, it's going to be very difficult to execute those partnerships when we really need it. So now is the time to work on those things, and that's what we're doing. Training and qualification, communication internal and external, highlighting the effort. We need to show the impact. Your people worked hard during Irma. The county folks worked hard during Irma. But we did a poor job, in my opinion, of highlighting the effort, the heroic effort on the part of your fire, your police, your public works. Pictures of them out doing these jobs under adverse conditions, working feverishly to return services for the community. That's where we've got to do a better job going forward. VoAD, we talked about our volunteer organizations and the planning process. Our primary and secondary contractors, you need to have is the city. Debris removal is a big one. You have to think about that. Our sheltering, we've talked about that. Unified government in terms of incident management. I think we did a pretty decent job in Irma. We've got a good foundation and I think we'll do even better as we move into the future. State versus local, we talked about that. Our at-risk populations and of course, lean forward and often. Let's don't be waiting and reactive. Let's be proactive in how we approach all of this. Be energized and be engaged, I think, at all levels of government and we're going to be able to meet the task in front of us. So the way ahead, action items, determine highest risk and set our priorities. If your public works, you need to think about your infrastructure. And now as I think about my infrastructure, if I am in a detailed way and I say, "Oh, I'm just going to think about lift stations." Now I need to prioritize those lift stations. I need to prioritize buildings, services. The things that are important that I've got to turn on in some logical order, I need to be thinking about that, right? Build government, business, nonprofit, faith-based, functional teams, we're working on that. Resiliency and recovery plan, that's in the works. Our local emergency operation plan continually in revision. Enhanced mass certification, we've done that with our Code Red. Exploiting geospatial information systems with our GIS. We're working on that and we're working on that in partnership with you. Ensure critical systems have sufficient redundancies. Ensure effective COOP and COG and training and exercise. And that's my brief. Any questions for me?
Chuck, no question. Chuck, no question, Vali-T, I appreciate you coming out.
Sir.
Kind of filling this in on this because having worked through Matthew and Irma both, I see a lot of what you're talking about, your communication solving, about 99.9% of all our problems. I like the Code Red update also. Would you just convince me when y'all say it's time to go, it's time to go.
Yes.
Kudos also to all the people that are involved in the recovery effort because having been there with them, we see what they're going through. And the folks would have heeded the warning to evacuate. Makes us, that us concentrate on other things also in terms of your safety. Just appreciate you coming out. Thanks.
Chuck, a couple of things. Have we been able to make any inroads with our stations to the south? Which is Jacksonville, which covers Camden County. That I think out of everything that you all put together for us during Irma, we still were not able to get out the information that we wanted to get out and needed to get out to our citizens here in Camden County.
Yes, sir.
They would overlook Camden County, go to Glendale County. And I think, you know, raised my concerns about that a number of times. Have we been able to make any inroads with those folks over there?
Yes, sir, thank you for asking. So let me talk about that for just a moment. So as part of the national level exercise that we just went through collectively, right? As at all levels of government. So as we went through that, we recognized that we've had a gap in terms of media market coverage for our county, right? So sometimes it's great to come down and get the shot up. Here's, look, look at the boat up on the, in front of the restaurant, Downtown St. Mary's. But we didn't get meaningful coverage. We want to see them scrolling our message on those Jacksonville stations. We want to see them be better engaged as a market with us. So in furtherance of that, we asked the state of Georgia from the governor's office, from GEMA, to bring their senior public affairs officer down here to kind of do a capstone at the end of the national level exercise with us. So I had Chief Smith, I had Bill Carrera representing your organization in there. And what we did is impress upon this person the need to have the state help us with that media market and that messaging. So the takeaway is that GEMA's public affairs is now writing it into their op plans that during a state-level activation based on a county activation, based on that declaration of emergency where we've got the big ticket item coming on like a hurricane, that GEMA is going to help carry the message to the Jacksonville market directly for us. They will plug in with us. We may even have a rep that comes physically to the EOC so that we're getting both the message that is the Atlanta, the governor's message, that could be a broader coastal county message, but the specific message that is our county, our cities, that needs to be kind of carried by the market. Some of the folks that go, that went inland, they follow the tweets from the Jacksonville news market. So that's a big part that we cannot, we can't discount that level of information that comes from them that the public is looking for. So Mayor, to your point, yes, sir, I think, I think we're working that hard and I think we've got a better answer than we had during Irma.
Certainly helps so because I think our citizens who frequent the markets in South Florida deserve that attention that we have not been getting. And I will stay, stay on top of that with you all, starting getting there. You mentioned earlier about storms slowing down and I heard some of that recently. Has there been any reason why just one of the...
Yeah, it's going to be, where's the Georgia Tech, girl? Millionaire. So yeah, so it's, that's huge, NOAA's forecast climatology modeling. Basically where they've taken the data sets back 40 years, where they've got good, accurate, where there was some level of instrumentation for them. And they've kind of just been piecing this together so they look at developing trends. The trend that emerged from those data sets and all of that modeling says more precipitation and slower movement. Now, there are exceptions to everything, right? And it might be that you get a quick-moving storm that doesn't put out a lot of water. But again, remember one of my first slides, you're going to plan for worst case. You're going to plan for a major event, a major hurricane that will be slow-moving and will have a lot of precipitation. So just without storm surge, being inundated in a prolonged, protracted way with rain, okay? I'm going to tell you, it's going to be a bad day. And it's going to really tax our system and our ability to manage all of that stormwater. So that's, that's my simplistic answer for that.
Oh, thank you, Mr. White.
Sir.
If we have any questions? I just, I thank you for your presentation and I think it's extremely important that we're constantly reviewing preparation ahead of storms, storm season. Appreciate the work that you've done. I appreciate the county and the city getting involved with this. When we first took this on and I saw the alerts of this going on, I actually thought it was a really good idea for us to double back as a city and sort of look at what we did after our place. We should continue to do that. And part of that was kind of reviewing some of the things that we turned in financially. Bill, can you, can you put that by a little? I know we had a list of us all on there, what things before this, with debris removal. And I've had a couple of questions. And again, this isn't for you, but perhaps somebody else can inform me on what this is. This was refused by FEMA. And I'm kind of seeking some clarification on what we have here. This is storm removal. And it looks like this was denied by FEMA. And it says current Mayor Smith. So I was just looking for some indication on what this is. Was this a city property?
There was a tree that was on city property that blew over on a resident.
Do we have city property or do it to a tree?
Tree was the, city property. The city manager himself and public works director went around and looked at the side.
So this, this is, this is on city property?
The tree was on city property that fell onto a resident.
So why was it that FEMA denied this?
I have no idea why they denied it. Went around there, we knew that it was going continuing on and they needed some kind of relief. and they needed some kind of relief at that residence. So that's why I took the city manager around there to look at and assess that, and they decided to go ahead and see if they could get that tree off of that residence.
Okay, we had a number of properties that were inundated with water, three, four feet deep, some of them. And they didn't receive any relief from the city. So my concern is, is this a misappropriation of funds? This doesn't seem like this is within our ability to pay for tree removal on a property that's not ours.
Well, the tree was on city's property that fell over there on that property.
To my knowledge, we don't own, I drove by this property on the way to the meeting tonight. To my knowledge, we don't own any property near this residence.
So we don't own the property, that's near a residence?
Yes, sir, that's what I said.
Well, according to the information that I got, we did.
You said you went to this property?
Yes.
So was it city property?
According to the information I got from the public works and the city manager.
Was it city property?
I actually don't recall. We didn't have a survey on the property lot.
Okay, because I'm saying, this says per Mayor Smith. And typically, that's a, when somebody starts telling all this stuff, per somebody else. It's a sticky situation.
Well, again, according to the city managers there who went around there, public works directors back there who went around there. That's what I was told, that's all that I could know of.
So you did not go to the property?
I'm just telling you, I went around there to the property. Looked the city manager and the public works director.
Okay, so in the event that we do not own the property that you're stating that we own, this property, who's paying for this?
Well, at the time, that's what I was told, and that's what I went by. But had it anything differently, we would not have touched it, councilman. I don't know what you're getting at.
Well, I looked up the list of things that they've got.
And I know that there was a lot of damage to a lot of different properties. That property was not sitting a lot. The only reason that they continued to call us, we went around there, we looked at that. And we collectively made that decision. It was not just my decision. City manager says he doesn't have to call that. But you gone going around there?
I did, no, I'm just, I'm trying to look at the property now, can you?
Okay. I want to work, councilman. Day is going to what?
It is, I feel it's important for us to review.
Let me see.
All expenditures before and after a storm. And when we do a cleanup, it's important that we're cleaning up, you know, properties that are owned by the city. And if it's not owned by the city, then we don't need to be covered calls. I know I meant numerous times to the city manager, to other councilmen, and we looked at numerous properties, and we said, you know, this can be done by the city, this cannot be done by the city, because this is unethical and illegal. And I tried to make sure we helped as much as we could with what we could do, because people were hurt. And then I find a piece of property here that looks like it's not ours. And that's why I'm posing the question. It's not our property. One of those six, Louis William Street, is not our property. It was denied by FEMA. And so that's my concern.
Well, there was a lot of, denied, what we've done that we denied.
From my understanding...
I guess my concern now is that it's several months, and you've just decided to bring this up about that.
We're just now doing a review of it, sir.
I mean, why wasn't this brought up before?
You know, I think we need to move on. This is not the time.
I agree.
We talked about this. He's doing a presentation, let's let it finish. And if you have something you want to bring up to him regarding misappropriation of funds, do it on a later date.
And if it's a problem, if it's a problem of two hundred dollars, I'll pay the city two hundred dollars.
No, that's not fair. Let's just move on.
I think it's embarrassing for him to bring that up now.
Well, no, I think it's embarrassing that we put the bill for somebody else. And that you broke it, that you asked staff to focus. I think it's embarrassing that the mayor broke it, doesn't think it's important enough that we need to examine. I've told Mr. White that I've done, I'm not going to stop for him. I've tried to ask nicely, and obviously I'm getting stonewalled here. I get stonewalled by both the mayor and the mayor of Tim, which is concerning.
All I am telling you is that the tree was removed, and if the, if its amount of two hundred dollars is up there...
It's twelve hundred dollars.
I will, with twelve hundred dollars, you know, if that's, if that's what's burning you, I will pay the twelve hundred dollars if that'll make you happy.
No, it won't make me happy. It's what's ethical, it's what's correct, it's what's right.
If it's unethical, if a mistake, if a mistake was made by you, and you want to bring that up in the public now, so be it. If it's twelve hundred dollars that makes you happy.
Sir, I did not okay this, the only way you're saying it's me. This is okay per Mayor Smith, period. It's not me, it doesn't say per Grayson Day. It doesn't say per James Elway.
I know what it says here.
Okay, so if it's per you, then that's you.
And again, and again, because it was not a single decision made by me. I did not go out there and tell the city manager, or the public works director, remove the tree, we all went and looked at that and made that decision collectively. Now, if you want, if you want to put the blame and put it on my shoulders at this time, that's fine, councilman, I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, let's just...
If it's, if you want to at this time of the year, and this time of the month, if you want to put that on me and say that's my responsibility, if that'll make you happy, and we can move on with our meeting, instead of at this time, let's, this gentleman come and make this presentation. You want to bring this up, that's fine. But all I ask for you is that if I need to pay this back, let me pay this back. Let's move on in this meeting.
Okay, so it shouldn't have been an issue. I just asked.
Move on, please.
It wasn't an issue.
So this could have been done without this form and this meeting?
When I can't get any answers, and I'm getting stonewalled at a meeting?
Well, you don't say anything to me before this meeting about this. It would have been easy.
Sure.
I mean, but you, you didn't say anything to me.
Sure.
Did you, did you call me, write me, email me, or?
You don't answer emails.
I said, I'm motion.
You don't answer emails. You don't answer emails, you know that.
Well, no, I'm not a great email person, no.
I know. Mayor, let's move on.
I'm not fine if you can get to that.
So if this is, if this is incorrect, you're going to pay for this?
Debate terminated.
It's not a debate, sir. And you can't terminate my ability to speak. Thank you, sir.
Debate terminated.
There's no termination to this, sir.
Fine, councilman, you know. We're not trying to...
Or are you going to reverse the city?
We are not trying to.
If I have to, yeah. Okay.
If I have to, we...
Thank you, that's what I need to know. It's taxpayer money.
It's a problem, if this found that that was...
Taxpayer.
Matter, that should note that, you know.
Mayor, we still have a few questions, I have, didn't want to...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
...get away without covering right now.
Sir.
Let's see. We had kind of a segmented evacuation occurrence last time. What have you, how have you thought about that? Have you rethought it, any changes to that?
Yes, sir, I mean, every storm event will be different, right? It'll be unique in terms of what we'll have to do as a protective action for the public. What happened during Irma, and I can give you the specifics. So as an executive policy group, we're literally looking at our best forecasting models. We're well outside of our seventy-two-hour window, and we need a forty-eight-hour minimum. Functional medical needs, those that need special care, the little amount that was already starting to go on. We called for a voluntary evacuation, right? And that was number one. Within one hour, we're told that the governor is ordering a mandatory evacuation. So again, I think the lesson learned is that it will be closer coordination with the governor's office, with GMA, so that we're looking at the same data sets, the same forecasting information, coming to the agreement collectively. So that when we say to the public that everything that is in Zone A, everything east of US seventeen is a first-level evacuation, or it's a county-wide evacuation, whatever that is, we're going to do it. The other thing, and I didn't get to talk about it, I think it's important, is the impact that Florida, you know, with twenty-six million-plus residents has on our county, when they're already ahead of us in terms of evacuating. So those, you know, South Atlantic pushing up, if it's on the eastern seaboard hurricanes, are going to drive evacuation, in some cases where people are going to come up I-95, and we saw that. That's difficult. That's a challenge, because they're consuming the hotels, the fuel were being impacted across the board. But you have to balance that knowledge that you're going to have all those millions of people coming, and they're maybe heading inland into the Georgia counties. They were going as far as north of Atlanta for hotels. But you can't order too early simply because Florida's on the move. There's a cost to our businesses, there's a cost to our infrastructure. When you start saying that you're going to close services, closing the government, you're closing the schools in anticipation of ordering an evacuation, that's huge. So you're balancing the life-safety issues, again, every storm is unique, against the overall picture, right? You have to factor in, and we've got to do that, if Florida's moving. And we've got to communicate to our public to start thinking about it. So even before we're into thinking about a mandatory call, we've got to encourage people that if they can go, think about going. And think about booking a hotel. Think about where you're going to go, because these resources are going to be scarce. Messaging will be a big part of the future in terms of better kind of coalescing around the requirement for evacuation. Because you're right, I think it has been a little bit segmented and snowplowed.
Okay. Can you expand a little bit on reentry permits?
Yes, sir. So the reentry permit today, if you came over to the EOC here in Kingsland, we would issue you out a green card, right? That has a unique number. We would log you in, and we would say, you qualify for reentry pass because you meet one of those phase requirements that previously that the state had identified. As an example, you're under, you were under Phase 2B. And so you were part of the public that provided critical services. You managed propane, gas, or infrastructure, something that was necessary to start the recovery and the restoration of services for the county, for the city and the county overall. You might have qualified for that pass. We no longer control that. That is strictly now through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. Our link on our website, that we can also work with the city to put on your website, so that we're ensuring they're getting maximum web traffic, is to go directly to GMA. You fill the form out, you put it in. If they have a question about what you're asking for, because, let's say you're a local business, and you say, "I need to be in that, you know, Phase 2, getting my folks back in here." Well, GMA, if they're not certain of where you qualify, they're going to contact my office, and they're going to ask what critical service you provide here in this community. And then from that, we're going to provide them back information to say that we think it is or does not qualify for the requirement for that level of phased reentry.
On the recovery side, how do we do a better job? Have you thought through engaging the public in the recovery process? For example, you know, there's local, there's a local Navy out there. If we were to engage, what's the thought process been on that?
Yeah, so again, I think it's been an underserved, under-resourced, under-planned part of the problem, right? The big gap in our own after-action that we wrote, and we worked with the cities and with the Navy, with the sheriff's office, with the school board, to say, here's our after-action for Irma. Where's the big gap at? Well, the big gap is recovery, right? Short-term and long-term, those things that are in the initial days, weeks, but more importantly, months and potentially years, that's the recovery piece. The engagement for the public is the recovery redevelopment planning. We've done a kickoff on it. We've brought everyone in that represented all aspects of business, faith-based, you know, the general public at large. And we're energizing them to say, bring something to this planning process. Tell us what recovery and redevelopment looks like, and what are the priorities that we as a community have to set as we all move forward? Because we're going to own this plan, and then we're going to be responsible for testing it, potentially using it, and ensuring that it's a living, breathing document. So I think the recovery process, we're investing in it now. It's maybe a little late to the game, but it will be an important planning tool, I think, overall for the community. But it's going to be contingent on public buy-in, public support to the recovery process. There's so many aspects of this. If you take Katrina, if you take Slyell, Louisiana, Gulfport, Mississippi, go take a look at availability of housing, you can potentially lose a large portion of your population simply because there's nowhere for them to come back to. That will break your back economically, right? So these are all intricately tied, interdependencies that have to be mapped and identified. You've got to think about them. Who are the critical suppliers and resources? Maybe it's something unique that is provided to subbase Kings Bay from our community. So they've got a piece of this. Everybody has an interdependency. So we've got to think about those. That will be the cornerstone of a recovery redevelopment planning process.
Shelter after the storm. There's lots of complications around that. But we can solve the water problem, we can solve sewage problem. What are we doing to address that after the storm?
For solving the utility side?
The sheltering problem.
For the sheltering.
For people who have found, you know, all of a sudden they're without a house.
So the county is working with GMA and the Red Cross and the Salvation Army. Everything from the detail of how we're going to feed them, the food plan, right? Physical location. We're envisioning working towards our rec center as a base camp location, as a hard stand to stage, the way the power companies stage in, all of these utilities and trucks and all these things that they bring in, and they would stage off-site. Well, we're going to be that second-level staging, both for potentially sheltering at that location physically, but additionally to support our first responders. I'll give you an interesting factoid here. The, we served a pod, a point of distribution. We fed over four thousand families at Coastal College in a parking lot by having National Guardsmen set up stations that had water and food, and finally, tarps and ice at the last station. But guess what? Those thirty-five air National Guard members that showed up said, "Hey, can somebody feed us? We don't have anywhere to stay." So we voiced that to the state. We recognize that we've also, not only do we have to take care of the public, to some extent, ideally, first-order businesses, please evacuate. Please evacuate. If it's called for, evacuate. Plan that there will be no shelter of last resort. But in that post-storm, we recognize we're going to have to have sheltering capability. Government's got to have a lift in that, along with our faith-based partners. And so we are working the plan, working the facility, working the details to make sure that when we say activate that shelter, that we will have capability and we will have capacity. But remember, shelters are not long-term. That's where you get back into recovery and redevelopment. If you've not thought about, well, how do we bring in, from a mobility standpoint, temporary housing? I like to say FEMA trailer, because it has a bad connotation. But in some cases, that's exactly what it is. A roof is better than no roof. So again, these are all things that all kind of tie up together. Nothing stands alone, and every action has an unequal and opposite reaction, so.
So at the state level, there's a little bit of bureaucracy, I noticed.
Sir.
When our first responders came here, they came within to fuel tanks. They could not get fuel at our fuel stops. They were waiting on the bureaucracy to approve them. Have we looked at that, thought through that, look at the issue?
Yes, sir. So a lot more detailed planning. So just as we took Irma after action and said, man, look at these things that are a gap for us in our community. And whether it was, we didn't have a generator, a lift station, right? Stormwater management, whatever those issues were that we had to take a critical look at, the state has done the same thing, and they've invited us in to those meetings. We've helped three now regarding after-action for Irma, where we talk specifically about those gaps, like availability of fuel, and how they're going to preposition fuel off-site, think Douglas, Georgia, and then bring those fuel tankers into our location. And we're basically identifying where we marry it up in terms of where physically those things end up at. So there's a lot of details, a lot of planning, but clearly that is one of those action items that we have. Thank you, we're lucky to have you all, thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions?
Anyone else?
I want to thank Mayor, Council, I want to thank you guys for allowing me an opportunity to come in here and take up way too much of your time. I appreciate it. I think at the end of the day, we're starting out in hurricane season. We need to pay attention, invite them on the stress. I've got a great partnership with Kingsland, a fantastic partnership, and clearly, we can only do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. I need to back up just one item to get this recognition from our chief, which is some good information for the homeowners. Uh, I need to back up just one item to, uh, get this recognition from our chief, which is some good information for the homeowners, uh, in the city of Kings.
Mayor, Council, good evening, how y'all doing?
Evening.
Good.
If I could, real quick, can I have, uh, Captain Weaver, Lieutenant Barney, Lieutenant Miller, and five other men walking, come on. I want to recognize the ISO team for the community. I'm awfully excited today, this has been about five years in the making, to do something positive for the community and citizens of Kingsland. Back in October twenty thirteen, the city ISO rating was a three-nine, that's a grade rating of seventy-three point two-four. Today, I can happily say that we are now at the ISO class two Y, which means any, anyone within a five-mile radius of a recognized firehouse is a class two. Anyone outside that five-mile radius, Clark's Bluff, Harris Bluff Road, that has city hydrants, they are two Y. So that's a positive savings for taxpayers. And the communications, water supply, community risk reduction, on behalf of the city council that helped us about that policy, give us extra points. Also training, and also the many women, Lieutenant Miller was in charge of pre-plans, Lieutenant Barney, training, Captain Weaver, our pump test, Jeff Lee, which is absent, is in charge of our hose, keeping tested our fire hose, and Rachel Noir, of course, she's our public safety lady with, um, prevention, and I'm, I'm proud of all of them, I want to give all of them a hand. I want to thank y'all, but y'all have to get back, I want to hold y'all alone. Thank y'all, I wish I'd be recognized for great work. Always good to recognize your troops when they do good. I also want to take this opportunity because this is what I believe, I also believe, I want to give a big thank you, and I thank the citizens of Camden County and Kingsland as well, and the citizens of St. Mary's Church. I want to thank the elected officials, because I believe if they have not pushed for more functional collaboration, I like that C-word, consolidation, but collaboration together, I think that we probably wouldn't achieve that because the two cities benefit working together and along with the county. So we all really, really work well together. I also have to give a similar presentation tomorrow to the county commissioner, you know, being the interim chief on the county side, because Camden County also maintained their ISO rating as a four-ten. So I really want to say that I'm awfully proud for myself and also, um, the many women that was able to drop the ISO rating for the citizens of Kings.
Chief, our next question, how would this affect your homeowners insurance?
You know, that's the, it all depends on, based on your homeowners insurance, I kind of went out the other day because I knew I was going to get asked that question, and I'm waiting on some data to come back, I started off with State Farm, but, you know, I believe you will see a little drop in that, but I can't give you a dollar.
Chief, thank you so much for everything you do, y'all's fire, firehouses are all just immaculate. Every time I go by them, always working hard, and it's great hearing those sirens, so thank you so much, you're a happy guy, I appreciate it.
And thank you in passing, this is, this is true.
Thank you.
Appreciate the honor. The next item is granting audits to the public, and if there's anyone that would like to come forward, councilman, any concern, I mean, this is a whole new one. Okay, there is an old business, and the next item is planning and zoning. First item is approval of a home occupation permit, Dustin Getz is requesting a home occupation permit to get his pressure washing zone is R one located two five overdrive, county commissioner recommends approval. Call for motion on this item. Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Galloway, any discussion, if not called for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm, uh, stands approved. Excuse me, next item is approval of a preliminary plat for Lake Mile West, parcel one oh seven dash zero zero five, and part. All the song sellers proposing, uh, twenty-four lots, two tracks, the lakes near Coastal College Zone are on the primary commission, recommends approval. Call for motion for this item.
Michael Klein, second that motion.
Motion by, uh, councilman Day, second by councilman Michael Klein, any discussion on this item? Not called for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm stands approved. Next is approval of a preliminary plat for Water Edge three, parcel one oh eight, zero seven three. Owner, Water Edge Kingsland Holdings LLC, proposed twenty-two lots, um, six point twenty-five acres. President owning R one, R one, primary commission recommends approval, call for motion on this item. Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Galloway, discussion, not called for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you. Next is our new business, and first item is a bid award for purchasing and installation. Says, uh.
Yeah.
Approval of bid award for purchase of, and installation of equipment on four police vehicles. Staff recommends a low bid for West Chatham warning devices at fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Call for motion on this item, motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Michael Klein, discussion allowed, call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you. Next is approval of bid award for two pickup trucks, one for public works and one for the police department. Staff recommends a low bid from Wood, Wood Folsom Ford at twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars each. Call for motion, motion to approve. Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Galloway, discussion.
Yes, where, where is Wood Folsom Ford?
Jesse. Jesse, motion is out.
It's a really nice, because we're not getting any bids, hopefully. More continues, you know, getting bids, look.
Call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm stands approved. Next is our approval of a mutual aid agreement, approval of a mutual aid agreement between the city of Kingsland and Kings Bay Fire Emergency. Okay, I'm sorry, just second chief, approval of bid award for Welcome to the Lizard's Guide, staff recommends a low bid, uh, lunch, printing and promotions, fifteen thousand copies at one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, call for motion on this item.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilman Michael Klein, second by councilman Day, any discussions, call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Our chief Smith, mutual aid agreement.
This is the thing which that agreement we have with our partners at Kings Bay Navy Submarine Base, um, the King, it was a big agreement, mutual aid.
Call for motions.
So moved. Second that motion, Michael.
Motion by councilman Galloway, second by councilman Michael Klein, discussion, call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm stands approved. Next is adoption of resolution number twenty-eighteen dash eleven, City Clerk London, Emma Shonacy. Resolution established in twenty eighteen qualifying dates and times for certain city officers in the city of Kings. Staff recommends approval of this date in this item. Call for motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Galloway, discussion, call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm stands approved. Next is approval of a limited warning deed, Sheffield South Police Station. Approval of the limited, limited warning deed for Sheffield South Police Station, staff approves this recommendation, call for motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilman Michael Klein, second by councilman Galloway, discussion, not called for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you. Next is approval of resolution twenty-eighteen dash one, resolution accepting property, Sheffield South Police Station, staff recommends approval to this item. Call for motion.
So moved. Second that motion.
Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Michael Klein, discussion, not called for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you. Next item is real point of a non-public representative for Camden County to serve on Coastal Regional Council. Uh, call for motion on this item. It's called for motion on this item, Craig Root is the last appointed Coastal Regional Commissioner.
Is there a statement?
I bear that so, yes.
Motion to appoint Craig Root.
Second.
Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Galloway to reappoint Craig Root, call for motion. I'm sorry.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm stands approved. Next is cancellation of the current cold-grade service agreement dated December twelfth, twenty sixteen, pending approval of a joint contract, Camden County, staff recommends this, uh, cancellation. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Galloway, discussion, call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you. Next is approval of the service agreement for coastal engineering consultants, service agreement for coastal engineering consultants to work with Kingsland on specific, ready to issue, staff recommends this approval, call for vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilman Michael Klein, second by councilman Day, discussion, call for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, I'm stands approved. Uh, any announcements? The one that I have is, uh, we met, uh, last week with the, uh, investment managers that, uh, takes care of all of the, uh, employees, retirement benefits, et cetera. And I would like to just like to report to the city that all investments are solid, and we got all the reports on all the, uh, funds invested for employees' retirement programs, all came out in good shape. Nothing else, call for motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by councilman Day, second by councilman Michael Klein, discussion, not called for vote.
Michael Klein, yes.
Jim, yes.
Galloway, yes, he is.
Thank you, continue to adjourn.